It doesn't tell me what the requirements are, but it just tells me every time. Nope, that eliminates requirements. I guess. That's cool. I know y'all enjoyed that.
Technology's so hard.
What? Yeah.
Yeah, we can get it later. I just want to make sure she can hear us. We can get it later. I just want to make sure that we're not through there. Is Cathy on?
Okay, good morning. Welcome to the March State Board of Education meeting. It's great to see everyone here today, and it's always great to start out with some students at the audience. We will take a moment of silence to begin. Thank you. We appreciate those of you that traveled in today. We're going to start with Ross White presenting the World Skills USA team.
Good morning, Ross White, Director for the Division of Career and Technical Education. So this morning, we have with us Lily Williams, excuse me. So she's a 2023 graduate of Jonesboro High School and then also the Northeast Arkansas Career and Technical Center that's on the Jonesboro School District campus. So she has been selected by Skills USA, which is one of our career and technical student organizations to represent the United States at the 2024 World Skills Competition to be held in September in France. And so with that, she competed obviously here at a state level and then moved on to the national competition this past summer. And then there obviously was the champion, and from that, they have selected a unique group to continue forward. And so I think some things that I want to point out here is that she'll be taking part in the painting competition. She's assigned a technical expert, so her technical expert is Jamie Reed from Columbus, Ohio. And so what they do is they go as a USA team and represent the Skills USA and our nation while undergoing a really rigorous competition in their craft and what they're training in. And so that's what's really important. Obviously, it's a big commitment. There's a lot that goes into that on the front side, and then, of course, the backside of that with their skill development, their personal growth, and then obviously just the drive for their passion and what, you know, kind of their life purpose is. Williams plans to attend Lincoln Tech in Nashville, Tennessee, which is pretty prestigious in the world of her craft after that competition, and then, of course, continue on with that. And so with that, I do want to share a little fact. This will be the 47th World Skills Competition. They have 1,500 competitors that come from 65 countries and regions, and they take part in 62 different skills competitions that will take place in France this fall. So I'm going to let Lily come up and share a little bit about herself with you all.
Hi, I'm Lily Williams, and I'm very honored that y'all just would recognize that this is a big accomplishment. And I'm really thankful that Arkansas has the schools and the ability to give us this type of education in the skills side. I am just really excited for this competition. It's really just such an honor, and I did not think that I was ever going to get to go to something like this. I didn't know it existed until I was asked to go beat at it. And so I'm just really excited about it. Do you have any questions for me?
That's amazing. Thank you so much for coming in today to share. Now, when do you leave for France?
Um, I will leave September seventh, sixth or seventh, something like that.
Awesome. And how, was it a teacher at your school, or how did you get involved?
So, um, I took the class at Northeast Arkansas Career and Technical Center, and so then I went and competed at Skills USA at the state, and then, of course, after winning state, I went to nationals. Um, so at school, we can talk, we can bring in our own vehicles, and I didn't grow up really around cars, but since we could bring in our own vehicles, I really wanted to paint my Jeep. And so I literally just took the class because I wanted to paint my Jeep, and it's a cheaper way to do that.
You did awesome at it. Yeah, that's amazing. Cool. Board members' questions?
And so now you want to turn this into a profession?
Correct. I want to pursue this as my career.
Very good. That is fun.
Questions?
I was wondering if any of the board members needed to be a chaperone on the show to make sure.
Happy to go.
Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Congratulations. Thanks so much for coming in today, too. It's great for you to be here. We would love to get a picture with you if you don't mind. Thank you.
That's the best story. So we're listening to our house, and I got the curtains professionally, and it's like a bubble wool, and so I put a twenty pound silk belt on it. Forgot about it, and like full work into it, and I put something, I was like, I can go to like half my nail beds with them, so. And so I called the doctor, and I asked him what I do, because I can't wear nothing, just like wear a boot. Not to that.
But it's like, I don't know, she's making all this out. So there's a prep size that which, you know, for preparing the paint, preparing the paint, or paints, and there's also priming, you know, it's like, you know, the uh, the uh, taping up handles. I don't think I will actually be getting to be on it. It'll just be like, oh, just panel parts and stuff like that, just because that gets really expensive, uh, a bunch of things. Well, that's how we're acting, so it's like, they're all just trying to say, like, there's probably a bit of that, but that's pretty similar to the.
Someone from each country, like, are they all just, like, she represents the United States.
Thank you again, Lily, for coming in. And Ross, I would like to request, whenever the, when is the state Skills USA competition? Okay. Yeah, if you don't mind sending us, I think it would be neat to go see all the different, all the different work and awesome students around the state. So thank you very much. Great. Up next, we have the United States Senate Youth Program. I'm excited to hear.
Good morning, Board. Stacy Smith. I'd like to introduce to you Amber Purnique. She is our Program Manager over Disciplinary Literacy, and Rhonda Smith over here is over Social Studies and kind of has led this project. But Dr. Pride is out today, so like Amber to present.
All right. Again, before I get started, I do want to say a huge thank you to Rhonda Smith for all of your work on coordinating this project. All right, so the Senate Resolution 324 established the United States Senate Youth Program. It has been sponsored by the Senate and funded by the Hearst Foundation since its inception in 1962. The focus of Senate youth is to increase young Americans' understanding of the interrelationships among the three branches of government, learn the qualifications and duties of nationally elected and appointed officials, emphasize the vital importance of democratic decision-making for America and people worldwide. Our two delegates join Senator John Boozman and Senator Tom Cotton in representing Arkansas during the 62nd Annual Senate Youth Washington Week held March the second through the ninth. They were selected from among the state's top student leaders to be a part of the National Student Delegation, and each of our delegates will receive a $10,000 college scholarship for undergraduate study. And so we want to recognize our state's 2024 United States Senate Youth Program Delegate, Mr. Joshua Ophidel of Fayetteville, and Mr. Bannon Price of Ashdown. If you guys would go ahead and come on up. All right. So Joshua is a senior at Haas Hall Academy in Fayetteville. He has achieved the following honors and positions. Okay, so y'all just settle in. This list is about to be pretty long. All right, he is Student Council Vice President and National Merit Scholarship semifinalist, United States Presidential Scholar Candidate, AP Scholar with Distinction, United States Senate Page and Delegate to Arkansas Boy State, Treasurer for the National Honor Society and Beta Club Chapters for his school, Vice President and Past Treasurer of his school's Future Business Leaders of America Chapter, and Captain of his school's Arkansas Economics Challenge, Varsity Quiz Bowl, Varsity Tennis, and Varsity Basketball Teams. Joshua intends to pursue studies in political science and government. While in college, he aspires to develop solutions to world problems in which conflict exists and hopes to serve in an elected capacity endeavoring to impact his community. Joshua, would you like to say a few words?
Hello. Thank you for having us today. As you already said, my name is Joshua Ophidel. I'm a senior at Haas Hall Academy in Fayetteville. And I'll just take you guys through a few highlights I had during my past week in Washington. The first of which is me, Bannon, and me, Bannon, the other, and the 102 other delegates at the Senate Youth Program being able to go to the White House, actually, and watch the State of the Union in the White House, after which the president, both the president and the First Lady came back after the State of the Union to speak with us for about 30 minutes. It was just a really amazing experience, and it was like unforgettable moment. Another thing, sorry, is we had a lot of amazing speakers over the course of the week. But one that stuck out to me was Secretary of Transportation Pete Buttigieg. He spoke with us on Monday, and he really just taught us a lot about, like, determination and, like, reminding yourself of what it is that, like, motivates you to continue in your career, your path. And I just thought he offered a lot of really insightful, like, knowledge into, like, where I want to be in the future and, like, kind of what path I see myself taking. And something, he left us with a quote, which I thought was really powerful, which was, "The further we are from home, the more important it is that we be from somewhere." So it's like, kind of remind yourself that, like, no matter where we go, we're always from somewhere, and it's always important to advocate for where we're from. And that's just something that really stuck out to me. And the last highlight I have is just the 103 amazing other delegates at the Washington Week, including my good friend Bannon over here. From the, from the second I landed in DC, I knew I found a new family, just so many amazing students, so many leaders, advocates, so many just like, students just like me who are really wanting to see change in America, and they're willing to, like, make it happen. And they really inspired me, and I was just in awe of all the things they've accomplished in their own respective communities. It was just really, really inspiring thing. So in conclusion, this experience at Washington Week just really reinforced my desire for public service, and no matter, like, where I go, I will always remember what USSYP has taught me and the values, the lessons that it has given me. And I would like to thank the Board of Education for making this possible. Thank you.
All right. Bannon Price is a senior at Ashdown High School, and he has attained the following honors and positions. All right, Student Council Vice President, President of his school's National Honor Society Chapter, National Merit Scholarship semifinalist, AP Scholar, Presidential Service Award and Delegate to Arkansas Boy State, Chapter President of Future Business Leaders of America, Beta Club, and Skills USA, State President of Arkansas Skills USA, Member of the Ashdown High School Student Voice and Leadership Committee, Youth Ambassador for the National Foundation for Cancer Research, Youth Governor of Arkansas through the YMCA Youth and Government Program, Member of Senator John Boozman's Congressional Youth Cabinet representing the Fourth Congressional District of Arkansas, and founded the Arkansas Initiative for Change. After graduating from high school, Bannon intends to pursue studies in political science and public health. He hopes to develop, advocate for, and implement public policies for every citizen by serving in an elected capacity. Bannon, do you want to say a few words?
So it's harder to help what Joshua said, but I just want to thank you again for this opportunity, and I'll go through some of my highlights as well. So on Monday, when we first got to DC, one of the most amazing opportunities was me and Joshua selected to present a tomb on George Washington's tomb, a wreath on his and Martha Washington's tomb. And it was just a great opportunity to kind of represent where we are from and what we mean, and just an amazing opportunity. It's really, truly once in a lifetime. Also was the annual Senate Youth Reception, where we got to meet Senators John Cotton, or Tom Cotton and John Boozman. And it was just an amazing experience to talk to both of them. We got to talk about our experiences, what the week really meant to us, and also how important it is to come back and serve our state in Arkansas. And then lastly, we learned so much from the speakers, but throughout the week, we had the privilege of being led by a military mentor, one of our servicemen, Major Josue Duarte, and he is from North Texas and Dallas. And I really just learned so much from him, and I think Joshua did as well, just about passion and grit and determination. And it was just an honor to be with him and learn from him throughout the whole week. In conclusion, it truly was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that I'll take the lessons throughout every endeavor I go through. And I really, leaving, I leave with 104 new friends and one new family who are really just the most passionate and kind, supportive group I've ever been a part of, and I'm just so honored for the opportunity. So thank you so much.
All right. So we are delighted to present these deserving students to you as our Arkansas 2024 United States Senate Youth Delegates. Thank you very much.
Amazing. Y'all stay up. We want to take a picture with you. We might have some questions for you as well. But thank you so much, and thank you to your families for taking the time to come here today to share about your experiences. That is amazing. I can't wait to hear what's next for y'all and where you go. And I know how this program will have shaped you. In that sense, I would love to open up the floor. Any comments or questions from other board members?
I just want to know I may sleep because.
Yeah, doesn't sound like there's a lot of that, so.
I'll also just say, congratulations on your journey. And you're still at the beginning of the journey and have so many more milestones to achieve. And some of you, you two, probably accomplished more before you left high school than a lot of people do their entire lives. So don't forget that perseverance and hard work pays off, and you're a true testament. We really appreciate you representing Arkansas on such a prestigious program. And I heard some of, I heard, I think it was Josh going on public service and Bannon in maybe political science. I want to let you know, at the conclusion of your degree and your post-secondary attainment, we're always hiring and looking to acquire high-quality talent. So we will keep your resume on file, and you'll get a call from us in four years because we'll definitely have something for you to do.
Did they say where you're going to school? Do y'all know yet?
Um, yes, we're, I think we're both, so we have a few decisions right now.
Okay.
Like as of now, I think. As of now, I think my top choice is Yale, so.
Yeah, I think my top choice is Columbia right now.
Very good.
We'll cross your fingers. I know the next few weeks are big for that, so. But your hard work has paid off so well on this.
Well, don't forget about Arkansas. Y'all come home.
Well, we'd love to get a picture with you all. We appreciate it. Hi, Dr. Saunders. Next we're going to celebrate March is Arkansas School Breakfast.
Yes. Good morning, Board. Dr. Eric Saunders, District Operations here at the department. You know, child nutrition is something that essentially impacts every kid that goes to school across the state every single day, up to two opportunities with breakfast and lunch. And it's something that many times we don't have the opportunity to talk about. And so I'm excited to come before you this morning and share a little bit about with what's been going on. March is Arkansas School Breakfast Month. And so last week, had an event with many groups, the governor at Chico Elementary. We also had state senators, representatives, had a great turnout, partnered with the Arkansas Hunger Relief Alliance, No Kid Hungry, and kicked off the Arkansas School Breakfast Month. Now, in that, we had the opportunity to go around to the school where they do a breakfast-in-the-classroom model, where every kid starts off every day with breakfast. So they're not struggling, trying to learn while they're hungry, and meeting those needs as it comes. So that was a great opportunity, great turnout, and I wanted to read the proclamation from the governor. Whereas the school breakfast program plays a key role in ensuring that Arkansas students are healthy, active, and ready to learn every day so they can reach their full academic potential, whereas school breakfast can lead to reduced food insecurity, improved student health, and better attendance and behavior in the classroom. Whereas according to the Arkansas Department of Education, 64.86% of Arkansas students struggling with hunger qualified for free or reduced-price meals in the 2023-2024 school year. Whereas breakfast after-the-bell programs, which make breakfast part of the school day, have been shown to be effective ways of ensuring more students realize the benefits of breakfast. Since breakfast after-the-bell programs were introduced in Arkansas schools in the 2011-2012 school year, the number of breakfast meals served to students increased by 7.3 million, more than 27% by 2022. Due in part to the implementation of school meal deliveries, best practices such as breakfast in the classroom, second chance breakfast, and grab-and-go breakfast. Whereas, child nutrition workers across Arkansas continue to rise to the challenge with me returning to tried-and-true breakfast-after-the-bell meal delivery and menu options in order to serve healthy breakfast to more students so they can start their day with the fuel they need to succeed. Now, therefore, I, Sarah Huckabee Sanders, Governor of the State of Arkansas, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the state of Arkansas, do hereby proclaim March 2024 is Arkansas School Breakfast Month. And so with that, we are celebrating the Arkansas School Breakfast Month. And if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Did you come bearing gifts?
Should have had a breakfast in the classroom.
I felt like maybe we should have a spread this morning.
Both of my kids really appreciate breakfast in the classroom, and I know it's hard work to organize that at school sites, but I know more school sites are doing it, and they walk in, and it's either on their desk or a little card every morning, and they get it and get going. I know that helps out teachers as well. So thank you for your work in this. More members, other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Okay, with that, changes to the agenda. I know we have Action Item One has been pulled. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
I believe we want to hold on rule, I want to say it's V4F on the transformation contracts. I think, I think we got some feedback since the last time we did the workshop on how we can make some language be a little bit more clearer. So I think at this time it would be best if we just table that and then maybe bring it back at the next meeting. That way, we can get, get it across the finish line, hopefully within a little bit more clear, concise manner.
Yeah, so that would be items five-one, legal transfers, and items five-four dot F for transformation contracts, pulling both of those items.
Great. I, we don't have to vote on changes in that sense, so we will move along to the action item number two, the district waiver request for the alternative school calendar.
So good morning, Stacy Smith, Deputy Commissioner. So before you today, these are the same types of waiver requests that were requested at the special board meeting last-
at the special board meeting last month. These that you see before you right now have to do with the alternate school calendar. These districts are only asking for the waiver of when they had to notify the department of that July one deadline. We have two different groups today, so I'll be asking for two different motions. Um, the first motion I'm going to be asking for is a motion to grant a waiver of the dates of Arkansas Code six-ten-one-oh-six-G-three, by which a public school district board must notify the division of its intent to implement a school calendar July first and post the alternate calendar on their website by August first for the school year for the six districts that have submitted a full waiver petition. The six districts are St. Duquesne, Flippin, Hope Academy, Horatio, and Boden, and Boden Charter. So, there's, I see five there. Let me make sure there's not supposed to be a sixth district. Andreas, Steven?
Just.
Okay, so it's the five districts. So, I'd ask for a motion to approve those.
Board members, questions to my left, the center? Questions to my right? And I believe we do have districts on Zoom if there was a specific question of a school district. Okay. If not, then the floor is open for a motion. And this will be specifically for these five school districts waiver request.
Again, this was the inclement weather days and districts switching from a one-hundred-and-seventy-eight traditional calendar to an alternate calendar, and the waiver request has to do with the notification date to the department of July one.
So, the only difference between the top five and the bottom seven is the top have look, have their board already approved?
The top group has submitted all documentation. The bottom group has to still do their, their local board resolution and submit that to us. Most of them have board meetings planned and it's on the agenda.
Okay.
So, it's a timing with this board.
And you said most have that planned and on the agenda. Are there some that?
No, I'm sorry. They, we, they have provided evidence that it's on their local board agenda.
But this first vote will just be for this five?
Yes, the first vote is for the five that have everything submitted, and then the second motion, I'll make a contingency based on them submitting their information.
I'll make a motion, we approve the first five. Okay, there's a motion by Ms. Keener. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Ms. Woods. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
So, the second motion is to grant a waiver of the dates, um, of the dates in Arkansas Code for six-ten-one-oh-six-G-three, by which a public school district board notifies the division of its intent to implement a school calendar by July one and post the alternate calendar on their website by August first for the school year pending school board approval, local school board approval, for the seven districts that have yet to submit their board resolutions. So, if their local board doesn't approve it, it doesn't matter that you've approved it.
Okay. Questions, board members? Mr. Bragg, so, and so on. Questions to my left? Okay, floor is open for comments or a motion?
I'm going to accept the motion.
It's a motion by Mr. Bragg to accept the waiver pending approval by their local board. Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Ms. Hunter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, next, we have the alternative school calendar.
So, the next has to do, yeah, the school start date. So, these are waiver requests for next school year for the school start date. You saw this previously with, um, the, the same kind of scenario with them wanting to start be prior to legislative. So, the motion we're asking for, again, I'm going to do two separate motions, one that has one group of thirty-three that have submitted everything and then two that are, um, waiting for their board resolutions. So, a motion to grant a waiver for the school start date under Arkansas Code six-ten-one-oh-six for one year, and that was what this board did before, for one year, for the thirty-three districts that have submitted a full waiver petition.
And all of these are seeking the waiver to start August twelfth. Is that correct?
Um, you have, I believe, a sheet that shows that says twelfth on there. I see Middleton says the fourteenth, Southside says the thirteenth on the document that Andreas gave you. It actually lists the date that they're requesting.
Okay. Can y'all see that on the document in our folder? It's on the second page.
For Hope, it says typo one. Does that mean?
Some of the documents submitted by Hope had August first, but within that same document, it also said August twelfth.
Oh, okay.
So, to clarify, they're using August twelfth.
Got it, okay. We have two here that has no date given. What do we do with that information?
Which two are you noting?
On the second page, Rogers and South Conway.
Are you talking about the February twenty-first special meeting document?
Yes.
Okay, so those are the ones from last month. We just want to make sure that you have the tally in case you have questions.
I didn't hear that. What'd you say?
So, the February twenty-first special meeting document up top is simply just a tally of the school districts that received a waiver last month. The, that's not an action item, it's simply for reference in case you wanted to know how many were granted last month.
Okay. So, just to clarify, we approved, I guess I don't remember looking at what their, um, at, at a document like this that gave us their alternative start date before, and I guess I was unaware that we approved two school districts that it feels like they don't have a plan. Is that?
So, within a lot of the applications, even if they didn't provide a date, they simply asked for an additional week. So, it may be that they didn't list a date, but they said we wanted to start a week early. And, and that's the case for a few of them, uh, and even this month where they'll list like August fourteenth, uh, or even August thirteenth, they'll often say within the application for a waiver that they're simply asking for an extra week to start a week early.
Even if it's just a day or two on the form that says a week.
Correct.
Okay, questions, more board, board members, more questions. As I think through this, I think it would be helpful for this upcoming school year, when do they request that alternative calendar or changing to hours?
Yeah, so that would be, I believe it's in cycle seven, so that'll be at the end of the year. They actually submit what their calendar option is for the following year.
Okay.
Think you're going to see most districts probably select alternate calendar, especially if they came to the board this year asking to change to that.
Yeah.
So, this should not be something we see happen again.
Okay. I would like to see probably in the fall before the legislative session, and certainly these conversations will gear up again.
Who has what?
Who has what as far as start date and as far as alternative calendar? And if they do the alternative calendar with the hours, how many days they're going. This is just some sort of update on that.
Okay, I think that's a great, so, Mary, I'm going to ask that you note that so as to be able to pull back for the board for the fall.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, board members, questions or comments, or the floor will be open for a motion. So, our first motion is on thirty-three.
Mm-hmm, again, I'll read the motion for you. Again, a motion to grant a waiver of the start date under Arkansas Code six-ten-one-oh-six for one year for the thirty-three districts that have submitted a full waiver petition.
Questions, comments, or floor is open for a motion?
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the request for a waiver of the thirty-four school districts.
Yeah, our agenda did say thirty-four and you said thirty-three. So, maybe we should clarify that.
Let legal work out.
Good catch.
So, I, just to make sure that we're getting all the school districts, the ones that I've listed are Brooklyn, Cave City, Cedar Ridge, Concord, Cotter, Deer Mountain Judy, Flippin, Foreman, Gosnell, Guy Perkins, Heber Springs, Helena West Helena, Highland School District, Hope, Isard County, Mammoth Spring, McCrory School District, Melbourne School District, Mountain View School District, Mount Vernon, Enola School District, Nemo Vista, Middleton, Norfolk, Omaha, Perryville, Rivercrest, Salem, Shirley, Southside, Two Rivers, Van Buren, Villonia, Viola, and Wonderview.
I didn't hear Calico Rock. Did you say Calico?
So, Calico Rock is in the second group. They haven't, they haven't gotten board approval.
Okay, so that's.
They would be in the second motion.
Okay, so that's our discrepancy.
Thirty-three in the first motion, two in the second.
That's correct.
Okay, so, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the thirty-three waiver requests for the alternate calendar, starting, starting, okay, starting.
There's a motion by Ms. Keener. Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Mr. Bragg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The second motion I'm requesting is a motion to grant a waiver for a school start date under Arkansas Code six-ten-one-oh-six for one year for Calico Rock and Concord, um, that have filed a waiver petition but have not yet submitted their board resolution. So, upon submission of their board resolution, then they would be final approval.
Board members, questions, comments on that? Okay, floor is open for a motion then.
So, I make a motion, we grant the waiver for the school start date under, well, I'm not going to read that, for one year for the two school districts that are awaiting, uh, board approval, local board approval.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Keener. Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Mr. Bragg. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, we will move to agenda item four, the rules release for public comment. I want to reiterate, I appreciate having the work session prior to this meeting so that we could dig into the rules. Um, I understand, I know some board members were unable to be there though. So, I want to leave this time for questions as you all present.
Yeah, and I do also want to remind the board too that this is just releasing for public comment for thirty days, and so even digging into more questions or comments that you guys might have will also play into that thirty-day comment period. And so, if, if even today, after today, you have additional questions or things you would want us to look at, we can still take that in the next thirty days before they come back to you. Okay, so, we're going to utilize the same presentation that we utilized during the work session to kind of hit the highlights. Um, again, there are going to be several rules coming forward to you, um, so I actually think this was a great idea by Secretary Aliva to do these work sessions and these bullet points to kind of have these conversations prior to because there's so many coming. All right, so the first one is governing right to read. Again, these were existing rules, um, in which we know that, um, the Arkansas Learns legislation actually added some additional components and pieces to it. One, that ensures high-quality literacy screeners for all students in K-three. Um, again, that is an opportunity to streamline our assessment system and a, and a big deal for schools. Um, and establishes a literacy coach support for schools currently having a D and an F, which we have seen that program roll out this year. Um, it reduces redundancy regarding the science of reading and streamlines everything into one place, and it establishes supports for students not meeting grade-three reading expectation. Um, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to move forward through all the rules unless you, you give me a pause there for a question and then you guys can make a motion at the end? Or do you want to make motion by motion?
Let's, let's pause for questions after each one, but then we can do the motions at the end.
Okay, that's great.
Um, board members, questions on the right-to-read act rules?
I think it, Ms. Smith, it'd be fitting to maybe give, even give an update on where we are with the implementation of the Unified Coordinated Progress Monitor.
Yeah, yeah, because I do think that is a, is a big deal in our state.
It's a big deal.
Mm-hmm. So, we have recently released, um, an RFP, awarded, not just released, but we have awarded, um, a request for proposals for the K-three screener. Um, Cambium, who is also our partner in third through tenth grade assessment, won that bid. Um, we have actually built, we're going to build an all-encompassing one-assessment system that will include the screener, which will have the dyslexia components in that, um, in addition to the K-two summative assess that are state requirements for math and literacy, um, and it will be streamlined efficiently into our three-ten system. And so, we are going to have one assessment system, one platform. Um, we'll be able to bring cut scores to this board to identify what are the cut points to have, a reading intervention plan, what are the cut points that would kick a student into taking an a tes- a testlet, which would be considered more like a diagnostic assessment for a level-one dyslexia screener. Those will all be built into the system. The reading plans for parents, a parent platform to how to assist their child with reading based on how they've done in the assessment system, um, will all be built into one system.
And I, and I think that the great part about this is that a lot of districts are currently doing progress monitoring in some form or fashion, but it's not unified and coordinated. And the, the, the last bullet on there talks about meeting that grade-three expectation, and that, and that's a real pivotal time in a student's academic journey because as, as we're building those foundations in literacy that's so prevalent in K-one and two curriculum instruction, um, where, where there's illicit, explicit, systematic instruction in phonics and phonemic awareness, as a student progresses through their academic journey, that focus level of instruction tends to wane because we focus more on fluency, vocabulary, comprehension, how students interact with text. So, having that Unified Coordinated Progress Monitor statewide will be able to give us a snapshot, districts, parents, state, a snapshot on students' performance from K-one and two on how their progression, so that we're not waiting to third grade to determine whether or not a student's ready to move forward. We can provide interventions and, and, and change, uh, instruction immediately throughout the school year, not waiting for a summative assessment. And then, when that student does get into third grade, taking that time to make sure that that intervention is in plan, uh, that intervention plan is in place so as a student does progress through the grade levels, that there is still time in that academic day to get the, those holes in, in phonics and phonemic awareness delivered if they have gaps. So, thi- this is exciting. We actually put out a call, um, within the last couple of weeks for, for districts to pilot, and I think every district wants to be a part of the pilot because they're really, uh, the, the feedback's been overwhelmingly positive in moving this forward. So, I, I know it, it's a part of this rule, but thi- this is really going to help elevate, um, that early literacy intervention that, that is really a big priority of Learns in implementation and moving, moving this work forward.
Yeah, I would say that when they wrote the RFP, we, we aimed for the moon. Could we get one system to do all of this? Um, and honestly, like, we wrote it for, it has to have this, no matter what, we want a quality screener. Um, but then let us know if you can do X, Y, and Z, and that could be additional. Um, and honestly, we didn't know that we would get X, Y, and Z. We thought maybe we might get one that has the screener and X, you know? But to be able to get it all, um, it is a win for our state. I think it's going to be an opportunity that other states are going to be looking at what our state is doing with this unified assessment system that is streamlined to our standards, streamlined to our expectations for early literacy, um, and the message of early intervention is best. You can start providing direct intervention in kindergarten and not wait, you know, the old adage of, they'll, they'll mature. He's just a boy. Let him grow. Give him some time. Um, we know that early intervention is best, and it really follows along the lines of what we're talking about with everything else. So, it, I'm very proud of the work and proud of the team. They hit a home run.
Board members, questions, comments?
Now, if we have a statewide outage when we're doing the assessment system, it's not our fault. All right, moving on to the next set. Somebody click it for me, please? All right, rules governing educator performance. Again, these were existing rules, um, and this is where you saw existing rules on our evaluation process with tests and leads. So, those sections were not underlined because they were existing pieces. Um, the things that were added to these rules were the Merit and Merit and te- the Merit, um, Teacher Incentive Fund program and how that's gonna be implemented. It also, it had the superintendent contracts, um, and establishing goals within their contracts and the posting of their contracts, and it also kind of, a- again, reduces the bureaucracy for renewing teacher contracts each year for teachers who are not making progress or, or meeting expectations. So hit the teacher fair dismissal components as well as updating those components.
Questions, board members?
I'll, I'll also add, and, and just to kind of remind the board, that when, when Learns was signed, signed into law, we made a commitment as an agency to develop rules in a clear and transparent manner. So we've had work groups that have, uh, we, we kind of, we put out a call, though the whole state had over a thousand people respond, so we, we had a lot of talented youth from, for establishing work groups, that have gone through and made some of these recommendations, and I, I want to commend, uh, every chance I get, the work group and, and the leadership that really looked at this teacher, um, the Merit Teacher Incentive Fund, because we have teachers that are making a difference in the lives of students each and every single day. The, those young gentlemen that were here today in the Center Scholars Program, I guarantee they can name teachers that had a big influence and impact on their lives. So when we, we want to develop a program that captures that and recognizes and, um, elevates those teachers that are making a difference, um, it, that's a, that's a pretty big task, because, um, if, a lot of these teachers that are having that impact may not have a tested subject area, but we know they're making a difference in students' lives. And, and how do you reckon, how do you recognize the art teacher or music teacher? Or how do you ra- recognize, um, um, uh, t- teachers that are teaching maybe world languages and, and students are finding their homes, or even the, the, the career and tech ed teacher that, to help young Lily find a, find a pathway and, and, and opportunity to pursue a dream she probably never even thought about until she decided that she just wanted to paint her jeep. So there, this is step one in making sure that we have a system that's gonna do just that, where every educator that is highly effective or having an impact will have the ability to qualify through maybe a different tiered approach, where if they're mentoring other teachers, that they would get extra credit if they're in a hard-to-staff subject area, or in a rural area, or in a tested subject area. But we wanted to make sure that every teacher in the state was eligible to apply, if they're highly effective and making a, a difference in the lives of children, that they would be able to get something. So that was not an easy task for this work group, and I always want to just thank them for their innovation and creativity to come back with, with a program that I think is gonna do just that.
One of the clarifications that came out during the work session with the board was the question on, just because you work in a high-needs area, does that grant it for you? There's still that growth piece and, and the value of showing that you did have student outcomes and were a highly effective, um, educator. Okay? For the stackable piece.
But in that case, if you do work in a high-need school.
Then there's an, yes.
Then there's an additional incentive.
And, you know, we, we, earlier this year, you know, when we started first looking at our VAM data, um, and Secretary Aliva sent me out to schools, remember? He said, "Go, go visit these classrooms and see what you see," right? These teachers didn't even know that they were producing the type of growth that they were producing. Those teachers then would be, um, rewarded.
Thank you. Board members' questions? Community service.
Okay, the next slide, please. Alright, community service. So, community service and diploma requirements. Um, again, this was a big piece that was part of Arkansas Learns with students graduating, so that all seniors would have seventy-five hours of community service. Um, it was a moment for pride and a connection to their communities. Um, high school students, again, so seventy-five hours of community service. It, it, these rules allow the flexibility and empowers local school districts to make individual decisions about what they determine is community service. We do believe that school districts need to know their students, and they need to have the ability to make some individual decisions, um, and they know their communities and the resources and places that students have the opportunity to go and do community service. Um, we talked about how schools themselves can organize community service opportunities within the school day. Um, so I think there's the flexibility, um, given for school districts to be able to do that, and for students to be able to meet, um, the expected graduation requirement. It does also outline, um, students that are eligible for an exemption. Some of the questions that we have received, um, early on have been, just because a student has an IEP, is that an exemption? No. Again, it's about individual students and students working with families and working with their students in the schools to determine what's appropriate.
Questions, board members?
I just want to clarify the, the starting date here, the graduating class of twenty-six, twenty-seven, what does that relate to, to a current grade now?
So the kids that currently started ninth grade this year, as they become sen- when they graduate, they have to have it.
Okay, so a sophomore, junior, senior currently would not?
Not, not required. It has been built into our accountability system previously, because we have an academic course for credit, that if you earn seventy-five hours of community service, you get an academic credit towards graduation, and we did have that in our accountability system, so we have that transitional time of kids who are still participating in that would still get that credit, and school's getting recognized.
So a current ninth-grade student would fall in?
Yes, current ninth-grade students.
Thank you.
And, and I think it's also, um, important to clarify that this current cohort of ninth graders will have all four years to complete the seventy-five hours, so if, if, if life circumstance happens and they need to get all seventy-five hours their senior year, they can. Some students, many students are gonna hit the minimum requirement of seventy-five hours their freshman year, and that's okay, too. So we're, we're providing a lot of autonomy and flexibility to meet the minimum requirements, but we're already hearing, uh, stories of students that are far exceeding those minimum requirements, and, and some students are finding a connection to the community that they didn't know was available to them, and, um, it's, it's just been a positive, wonderful experience.
Questions, board members? Great, thank you.
Alright, rules governing petition for student transfers. This had to do with board-to-board transfers, I'm making sure I'm saying that correct, Andreas? Board-to-board transfers with this one. Yeah, this is board-to-board transfers. This gives the ability for, um, a parent or a school to be able to appeal to the state board, um, about a decision. So currently, districts have the ability to do board-to-board transfers, but both boards have to agree, and that can happen at any time during the school year. So if one board denies, one board approves, the parent could appeal to the state board for, um, a hearing.
Questions, board members? Okay, thank you. We did skip school choice, are you doing that?
Yep, I'm sorry. I got, got to clicking too much. So, public school choice, sorry about that. Um, this one was, was interesting, and I, actually, I had to have Legal come and sit down with me after our work session. Apparently, there was about five to six different pieces of legislation that actually went into some of the changes for these rules. Okay, so it wasn't all just Learns, um, there were several other pieces that went in there. What you're seeing happening, one thing, is it eliminates the three percent limit on school choice applications. Okay, so that cap that previously was there, um, has been removed. So a stu- a school district who is losing more than three percent of their students can't, can't stop it and say, "Nope, I hit three percent, you have to stay." Okay, they have to allow those students to be able to, to, to go. It also opened up, um, i- it gave the definition for what lack of capacity was, and what that is, it's about class sizes being full. Um, and whether or not, if they're not full, then they have to accept the application. Empowers military families to participate in choice through year, um, and allows them not to have to wait for the timeframe. Um, it puts school transfers, um, into effect immediately. Um, so a school district on their end can say, "Yes, I immediately accept this student," or "I'm accepting this student for next school year if they're full this year but not next." So that gives them some flexibility there. Outlines the process for extracurricular activities, um, and requires, and this was something that was added in, um, Desi to be notified, if more than twenty percent of the residents, students, are utilizing school choice to transfer to another district or to do a legal transfer.
Questions, board members?
I, I have a practical question, it's not really about changing or anything, but what is the point of the requirement that a s- a family notify the resident school district that the family is choosing another school district? I under- I understand planning purposes, but what is the effect if they don't notify the resident school district?
So part of that, part of that's done through the application process, um, and it's outlined in legislation that that is a requirement. So what, so the purpose of it was probably to notify enrollment numbers, information. Want to add to that?
And, and you can get a request for transcripts, so that the sent, the sending school will make sure to send the academic files on the students to the receiving school, so that it helps with the transition to be a little bit more seamless. But there is a reality that sometimes families move, and whether it could be parts of the state, or other states, or other countries, and they don't notify the school that they're leaving, um, that's gonna happen, but if they do, it makes a transition a little bit more seamless for those families.
I imagine part of that's a holdover from when you had that three percent cap, and so you had to watch who was leaving and who was coming.
Maybe so.
And now that we don't have that, I, I think there's a ripe for some discussion in this next legislative session of cleaning these different pieces up.
Yeah, I think when you have so many different pieces of legislation that are pl- happening at the same time, and then they're all kind of converging together and we're implementing, um, I think there's opportunity for some streamlining.
And there's different ways to transfer to, for the same effect, and so thinking more strategically about, do we just need one way, or do we need these multiple methods?
Yeah, and a- again, and I think I said this at the work session, and Secretary Aliva says it all the time, we want public schools to start thinking differently about choice, and that they are promoting their schools as the best and first choice for students, the same as privates or charters do. What are they offering their students and families to stay with them? You know, what are you offering your students and families to come to you, to pick you? Um, so what are the opportunities for your district?
More questions, board members? Comments? Thank you.
Alright, so this has the, these are new rules pertaining to overnight travel and use of restrooms. It ensures that, um, overnight travel and folks staying in the room together are of the same sex, and bathrooms that folks are insured to have a restroom to use for their sex. Um, it provides guidance for overnight field trips and allows for family members, um, allows districts the authority to provide reasonable accommodations as necessary, um, and that's kind of the overview of these rules.
Questions, board members? Comments? Thank you.
Student Protection Act, these were existing rules. There's only been one line added that extended the limitation on who a school district can contract with, and so it's a single change to the, um, rules.
Questions, board members? Comments? Okay? So with that, we can choose to either vote individually or batch these. Of note, we did the rule four-point-five, I mean, four-point-F was pulled.
Yep.
So that one is pulled. So with that, questions or comments, or the floor will be open for a motion? And the motion will entail, it will be public comment, so after the public comment process, the rules will come back for us for final approval.
See, it may be helpful, Andres, if you just outlined the timeline, so, so what we're approving today is release for public comment, how long is this for public comment? Then if there's substantive or technical changes, that would come back to the board?
That's right. So you would be, if you batch them, or if you vote separately, you'd be voting to release these rules for public comment. That would be for a period of thirty days. We would have a public comment hearing for each one of these rules during that thirty-day period, at which point we would look at the public comments received, determine whether changes need to be made to those rules. Um, if, uh, if the rules are good to go, and we either didn't receive public comment, or no substantive changes are necessary, we would bring them back to you for final approval. Uh, if substantive changes need to be made, we would release those rules for public comment once more. Uh, but again, the, the goal is to try to make sure we get it right the first time. We've tried to spend a, a lot of time to make sure we get this language, uh, correct. And so, anyway, long story short, um, thirty-day public comment period, uh, and then we will be bringing them back to you for final approval.
Thank you. Questions on that, board members? Great, the floor is open for a motion then.
How much have we approved the rules?
There's a motion to approve the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Hannah? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion passes. Thank you, and thank you all again for having that work session for us. I think it's helpful for everyone involved.
So, so if I could add, and, and I appreciate the feedback, and I feel like we have consensus from the board as, as we get through another batch of rules, which, which are coming, um, we're, we're gonna work together to find a time that we can meet and do another public workshop, and then make sure we get, um, get everything in line, hopefully for, for our April meeting to do another large batch of rules as well.
Okay. So that will be, will be coming once y'all know when those rules are ready? Okay. Thank you. With that, is there any new business that needs to be added to the agenda? Then we will move to the consent agenda. Does any board members have any items on the consent agenda they would like to pull, to discuss? Any concerns? Any comments on the consent agenda? We have three charter requests. Okay. With that, the floor is open for a motion then on the consent agenda.
So I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Thank you, Ms. Keener. There's a motion by Ms. Keener. Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Mr. Bragg. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Thank you. We now, we're moved to reports. Let's take a quick five minute break so we can allow our court reporter to, to clean up and then we will start with our reports. Okay, we'll get back started. We're gonna start with the Watson Chapel School District update. We have Sheila Whitlow and then I know the leadership of Watson Chapel is on Zoom today.
Good morning. Sheila Whitlow, Office of Coordinated Support and Service here at the, at the agency. So, um, I'm here to just give the update on Watson Chapel. I know I think you all have the, the presentation in front of you and so I just thought I would take, walk through that. And if you have any questions, um, you can address those. I did, uh, have been speaking to you about the idea of having a collaborative meeting with the service providers that are gonna be supporting principals. And we were able to get that started since we met last time. We've actually had two meetings with, um, the external provider, our team, as well as the co-op. So we, we're working on making sure that all of, that the support that we're providing is aligned and also making sure that there's follow-through. So when the, the coach from the agency is there, then we're, we're getting a report and then they have next steps. So our team is going in to make sure they're following through with those next steps. Uh, I did get to, uh, sit in on one of their coaching sessions with the high school and they were working on the master schedule. So they're in a, a good place with the master schedule. Uh, they do have one, let me see. It's not advancing. Can you advance that slide for me? Okay, thank you. So we'll go to the academics. Uh, the focus, uh, for this month was really working on those ma, the master schedule. And they do have one, as I said, at the high school, I did see the work that they're doing with the master schedule right now. Some of the things that they're focused on is making sure that they have those course proj, uh, progressions in place. And I, I, if you recall, we had situations where students could be enrolled in a CTE course, maybe a level two or level three course, but they hadn't taken the previous courses. So we've worked on that. They're ma, they're working on that to make sure those courses are in place and also looking at the courses, current courses that they're offering. Um, one of the concerns, of course, with master schedule is the staffing. So if we, if we look at what we know about the staffing right now, we still, we're not sure who is and is not returning in some of the courses. So they're going to be, the principals are gonna go reach out to everyone that they're concerned about because that has an impact on the master schedule. If you lose people when you have that turnover. So that's, that's another focus right now is, is looking at the staffing part. Uh, as far as, uh, student support, uh, you know, we spoke to you about some concerns in one of the special ed classrooms. And so we've had the pair of professionals have been trained based on videos that have been presented to them by Easter seals. Uh, the teachers have been trained, special ed teachers, and we're continuing that. We continually have support onsite from our team for the special ed department. Any questions about that as far as the student support or academics before I move to the last one?
I do recall last, oh, one I did wanna, um, encourage on the career in tech education and electives. I know one of the issues being that students didn't have a full course load at the beginning of the year or last year. That the, the district is strategically working to provide more opportunities for students in this upcoming school year.
Right.
And then I did wanna touch base, I believe last month we had some conversations about special ed and dyslexia services.
Yes.
For students, um, and how that, it, maybe it wasn't fully staffed, if it's fully staffed and what that looks like right now.
Right. They did fill the, the designee position and are still advertising. Uh, um, there was a board meeting this Monday night, so maybe they could speak to that for, with us. Cause I'm not sure about that, where they are with the dyslexia interventionist.
Okay, Superintendent Wilson? Did you hear that?
Can you hear me?
We can't hear you. I'm not sure if you... Okay.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Now you're on mute, Mr. Wilson. Um, I don't know if it's our systems or what, or what, but we can barely hear you.
Is Ms. Davis on?
Yeah. You might wanna move closer to your computer and see, but you do, you were muted now, so if you could unmute. Oh, you're muted again, sorry. Zoom is great, but can be tricky too.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
No, we can't really. Ms. Davis, let's see if we can hear you.
Can y'all hear me?
Barely.
Barely.
I hear Ms. Davis.
I'm not sure.
I think it's y'all then. I can hear Mr. Wilson and I can hear y'all.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so we're not sure right now. We can, um...
We can...
We can tou, Sheila can touch base with you all.
Right, on the, on the dyslexia interventionist. I know for spec, the special ed right now, look at, uh, the present, the slide on human capital. Right now, they are working with the special ed department and LEA supervisor to look at the number of pair professionals that they need in special ed for next year. So they can do some advertisements and fill those positions as well. And you see the note, and this is what I was alluding to earlier about the staffing. Uh, they have approximately two hundred fifty employees, but at the time, uh, I met with them last week, they had one hundred eleven of those forms returned. And of those one hundred eleven, six said they would not be returning, seventeen said, said they were uncertain. So that's why the principals are, are going to go out and, and speak to their staff to find out exactly what the need, they feel like the need is going to be for next year. They did, uh, hire a security director to, at the last meeting.
Board members' questions, Ms. Keener?
Yeah, I was wondering, so you mentioned that they hired the designee for the special education designee, but it's still posted on their website as an opening. Is that, and it, that it was just posted, I mean, like, less than a week ago? So have they hired somebody within the week?
It was, it was hired, they, they were supposed to have hired that, uh, that, filled that position on Monday, um, at the regular board meeting.
Oh, are they hi, sorry, what's he said?
Yep, Ms. Davis just put in the chat that they're hiring too.
Oh, good, okay. And then I was curious of the one that was hired and, uh, looking at the requirements, um, for, that they had, that they were able to meet all the requirements. Were you able to find people that were qualified to the specifications that they mentioned in the application?
Can you hear me? Now?
Barely.
No? Okay.
Did you, did you hear the question, Mr. Wilson? She was wondering if the person you hired was able to meet all the qualifications that's listed on the...
The five years in the special ed certificate, or his credentials, excuse me.
I was gonna go over those. Can you hear me?
Not necessarily. Ms. D wrote down that they have one for elementary and are getting a recommendation for a secondary designee. So they'll have one for elementary and one for secondary.
And they were, Ms., Ms. Davis, if you can hear me, was, was that person, did they have the five year, is, is experience and the credential, both are qualified? Okay, great, that's good to hear. Thank you.
I, I would like to also share with you that, that the DESI licensure unit will be onsite tomorrow. They're going to be meeting, um, with all of the teachers that are working under twelve forty waiver as well as those that have ALPs. To look at the progress as well as talking to them about their pathways and if, ensuring that everyone's on a pathway to licensure. And then Andy Sullivan will be meeting with principals to just review the navigation of the EES system, uh, teacher evaluation system. And talk to them about feedback, you know, just, just working with them on, on helping improve instruction in classrooms and supervision of instruction. So that's tomorrow.
And then I had another follow-up question from last, um, and this may have, from the dyslexia update from last time. Um, that seventy plus students were identified as needing level two screeners. I was curious if those happened and...
Good question.
Kind of how that, how that's, the follow-up on that.
Ms. Davis, did you hear that question? The seventy students that were needing level two screening?
She said they are continuing to screen and have placed several.
Okay.
I was also gonna follow up on that question for the new dyslexia teacher that you have hired, are they take flight certified? Cause I remember from last time you had wanted someone with that certification.
I don't think, I do not think that they have anyone with take flight. That is a goal.
Uh, right, I'm just remembering, so I'm curious.
Yeah, they use the, the Barton reading and spelling system.
And is there a timeline for our, for our screeners? Is there something in rules or regs that says, once you've been screened, that we have to follow up with a parent of a certain, in a certain timeframe? Or that we have to act on that in a certain timeframe? I don't, I don't know much about the...
I'm not sure about that timeline. I'm... Stacy, are you aware? Okay, we're talking about level two screeners, um, after, after they've been identified as needing a level two screener for dyslexia, is there a timeline?
Yeah, it's about thirty days.
So we've hit that mark. Um, so we will see y'all next month and hope for an update with numbers, please.
Thank you.
Any more questions, board members or comments? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and it's, I'm so sorry, there's, it seems that, uh, Ms. Davis says there are no rules for timeframe. So if we could update her and give her whatever is written so that she's...
Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you.
I'll make sure she has that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to board reports. Any board members have any things to report this month? Ms. Keener, did you wanna report on the...
I do, yes. So I had, um, the privilege on Monday of meeting and holding our first early childhood, uh, committee meeting. And, um, every single member that, uh, agreed to, to participate was there and had the opportunity to share their personal story. A lot of, we hear a lot of stories about family members, also their work experiences. And, um, we also had the privilege of the entire team from the Office of Early Childhood that works on the CCDF plan joined us and offered their expertise and their experiences and a lot of history and background on the decisions, um, that Arkansas makes in implementing that. So the CCDF plan, for those of you that aren't aware, is our childcare and assistance plan. It is a, um, regu, federal rule that, in regulation that comes down. And there are pieces in there that we don't have a lot of options on, that come straight from the feds. But there are several places where Arkansas has a choice in how to spend that money. And so we were able to dig into a lot of those pieces and hear, okay, how come we're putting money in this place and not in this place? And really hear from a variety of stakeholders on what might work for them. We also heard from the business community and what might help them. We know that childcare is an issue that affects the current workforce. It also affects, um, how our kindergarten through third grade teachers are able to do their jobs. And when we're sending our children from our early learning centers into kindergarten, we know that we need them to be kindergarten ready so that those teachers can do their job. So I, for one, could talk about that for days on end. So I was so thrilled to sit in a room with people that were also as invested. Um, Stacy was able to join us and, uh, Tanya Williams. And, um, I look forward to continuing that work. That was, um, it was an exciting day, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
I'll give a brief update regarding the academic accountability committee. Uh, we, we met, uh, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago and continued to analyze the data that the department collects from every school and district. And we are in the very final stages. I, I was hoping we might even have it done before today to share with you, but it's not quite ready. But a final form of a report that'll go to all the committee members and then we'll share those with you as well regarding critical data that, that we believe is highly relevant to performance of schools. Um, hoping to keep it simple and easily digestible for, for the, uh, the board member that's reviewing it, one or two pages. Um, very close to having that done. And then I anticipate that, uh, we will have a meeting in the next week or two where we start crafting a survey that, that we want to go out to, uh, district and school leaders with regard to what's happening in their buildings. And then, um, and quite possibly have that sent out by the next board meeting, I hope, we'll see. But, uh, anyway, continue to move along on that.
Thank you. Thank you both for your leadership and, and that work. Uh, are there more members, any?
I was just gonna give a, after the first Watson Chapel update that we had and they started talking about dyslexia, I kinda went on my own side venture. Um, my daughter was diagnosed with dyslexia this year in second grade and so I've gotten to see take flight, the program work and how it works for her and it blows me away. But then NASB pretty much the same timeframe put out that they were, um, having a seminar on advancing state policies with regard to dyslexia services. So I attended that state webinar. And I've also reached out to Scott Simon, who is over the Dawn and Millie Nelmes Foundation, which is here in Arkansas. Jessica Som, our teacher of year from last year, connected me with him. And so we're trying to work on a date to get together. So I don't know where this is gonna take us, but just with this, um, effort and focus on early intervention and how that can change things and update things, we'll see kinda where that takes us. But the NASB... and update things, we'll see kind of where that takes us. But the NASB, if you had the chance to go back and review, it was exceptional, so I would highly recommend it.
Sounds like we have a dyslexia liaison.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a personal connection there. I don't, so I saw her just, just here, I mean, the other night I was walking down the hall and my daughter was sitting on the couch reading, and it was one of those, I walked back and then my brain realized what I had just seen and I backed up and I said, "What are you doing?" She's like, "I'm reading." Like, it would, like, I, like, that was a normal thing for her. I've never seen her, she's in second grade, just sitting there reading a book. Like that, and she, she's like, "I like to read." I'm like, oh. And it just, it was amazing to me how at the beginning of the year, you know, math, you start to read in secondary, word problems, it's not just math problems. And spelling was, I mean, her first spelling test, she spelled every word and they were basic words. And so she's now understanding the, the rules, you know, the ED, how it makes the t, d and ed sound. And it's, it's just been a phenomenal program. And so when I hear that schools can't do it and I can't find people, I'm like, how do we fix this problem? Because it's an easy problem to fix if we can just get the right resources in people's hands. So I don't know where that will take us, but I have, between last month and this month, done some deep diving into that, so.
Good.
Well, I appreciate that, and I know the screeners that, that we talked about too. Hopefully, as you learn more about what's going on around the state, um, we'll be excited to hear how you can plug in further, knowing that.
Well, and from my personal experience as a teacher, I found that, you know, dyslexic students often think in shapes. And so there are so many aspects that other students might struggle with, they really have the chance to shine. Geometry, being able, you know, three D rendering, all those things. And so it'll be exciting to see how she kind of moves into that, so.
So I don't know if y'all have seen on LinkedIn lately, but you know how you can put out your job postings? Well, there are now specific boxes that they want you to check if you're dyslexic, because certain professions like architecture value dyslexia because you can think three dimensionally.
Mm-hmm.
Which is wild to me. So you get to check if you have dyslexia on LinkedIn and that gets you a head up and throw a leg up in a job posting.
Wow, that's interesting. Well, thank you. Any other board members to report? Then we will go on to Ms. Salam to hear about your great work.
There we go. So this is my board report for the month of March, which encompasses a lot of February and the beginning of March, which I've been quite busy. And so it's been fun. Just yesterday I got a chance to wear a crown, um, and a robe, but you all will see that next. Yeah, a crown and a robe, yeah. Very, very over the top. So you all will see that next month, so. Let's see if we can get to the next slide. Here we go. So Read Across America Week, which I love. Uh, it's an annual event that's celebrated on March second, which is my birthday and Dr. Seuss's birthday, which makes it ultra special. And it's a nationwide reading celebration to promote literacy and encourage the love of reading among students. And I actually got a chance to go to West Memphis and read to several classrooms of students, uh, Book About Manners and into my home district, into North Little Rock, and I got a chance to read to their third graders, since I was a third grade teacher at one point. And I absolutely loved it, so I was glad that we could celebrate Read Across America Week and actually get into the classroom and read to some of our children. So, love that. And since I went over into West Memphis, I went a little early and I got a chance to visit the twenty twenty, she's actually a twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Tennessee Teacher of the Year. So my heart is overflowing with joy. This is Dr. Melissa Collins, and this is her school. And she is absolutely fabulous. And her principal was just, he was so hospitable and actually let us go to lunch. So we got a chance to go to lunch together. And she is one of the biggest cheerleaders of education, of educators. She's constantly pushing each of us to be better. I'm inspired by her each and every day. She's just written a book, and she was like, "You can read, you can write one too." And so she's trying to encourage me to write a book, but it's awesome. And so I actually got a chance to visit her school and connect with her. And so I thought that was pretty cool, being able to visit another, um, Teacher of the Year. And, uh, February fourteenth through the twenty-first is Love Teaching Week, um, which is a grassroots effort to really highlight why we love teaching. And it began in twenty fifteen, and it's a way for us to celebrate teaching, leading, and learning in a way that unites and invigorates educators all across the world. It really started on social media, and so it's just kind of taken off. And if you look at those faces during Love Teaching Week, I got a chance to connect with some of my ATOY family and stop by their schools and meet some of their students, and it was fabulous. So we love, love Teaching Week. And it coincides with Valentine's Day to kick off, so it's really quite special. Also, the month of February is a Black History Month, so I was proud to join the Arkansas MLK Commission as the keynote speaker at Bell Elementary's Black History Programs. And, uh, students and staff there did like a wonderful job. I cried doing some of the poetry from the young ladies, like, I was so moved by it. They even researched, uh, the achievements of various historical figures to showcase during like a living wax museum. And so each of the students, and some of them dressed up in like full, like, full-out gear. It was so, so cute to see. Like Vesta Coleman and her little pilot, um, uh, uniform, and so I thought that was great. And so you could ask them questions and they would tell you all about this person's life, so that was fabulous. Not to mention, the staff did a soul food lunch and invited me to stay, and that was quite tasty, I might add. And speaking of tasty, that face may look familiar because that's our Fulbright scholar. That is Mrs. Tell, and I connected with her, and I got a chance to go to her classroom, which is a commercial kitchen. And I got my white coat, and so I got a chance to witness her students cooking gumbo. So each group was tasked with making their own roux, and I'm a self-proclaimed roux guru. So she let me give them the odds and ends about you can't stop stirring. So for thirty minutes, they stood there and I would pit shit when their arms got a little tired, cause you can't let it burn, or otherwise
You're done.
your roux is done. And so let's just say that, um, lunch was absolutely delicious and those are, um, some, that's her final product, because like, I got to eat a lot this, this past month, as you all can see. Really good food, so I got a chance to have lunch and eat gumbo with them.
What school is Ms. Tell's?
Conway.
Conway.
She's at, she's at Conway High School.
She's one of the three at all.
Yes, that's how I connected with her.
She's the Vietnam.
Next board meeting?
Yeah.
On-site?
You know what? She said she would love if, if other people of the board and secretary and, if people would love to come and visit her. I'm sure she, oh, she also made dessert. So, sweet tea, cause, you know, we're in Arkansas. So while I was in Conway, I actually stopped by Jessica Franklin's classroom. And I have known her for a few years because she was in North Little Rock. And she has been both an elementary and a secondary teacher, so I wanted to take this chance to just spotlight her. She's also a reading specialist. She just finished her masters for that. And the next two for Educator Spotlight are actually teacher candidates. So the one in the middle is one of my former student council babies, and I ran into her while she was passing out her resume. So Kami is getting ready to start teaching. Um, so she's actually looking for, um, a job. UCA hosted a teacher fair, and I ran into her there while she was trying to make connections, and she wants to, I think, teach music education, perhaps band, and so we got a chance to talk. And she, of course, she wanted to know, like, how my baby was doing because she remembers when I was pregnant with him, so I loved that. And then the second face might look familiar, um, that's Janice Williams, because I highlighted her dad, Bakari, as one of my Educator Spotlights, and I ran into her at the teacher fair, and she's also looking for a job. So they're graduating in May and they're out here looking for districts, so I just thought that that was special. So I'm glad I was able to attend the, the UCA Teacher Fair also, because I ran into some of our, our future teachers, our pre-service teachers that are getting ready to graduate, and I just think that's wonderful. So this time, well, in a few months, they'll have their own classrooms.
That's awesome.
That's great.
So that's all I have for this month.
That's awesome. It's, it's awesome to see the impact that you're able to have on individuals and schools and the greater state as you go out each month. So I always look forward to hearing what's been going on with you and, and what you've learned.
Yes, I, I have an awesome time pulling out and connecting with students, which some child told me just the other day, and he said, "You're like twenty." He goes, "I love you so much."
Take it.
So I, I love when I get to talk to the littles, cause they make me feel so good. I love you so much.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Comments, questions, board members? Awesome. Well, thank you for taking the time to put that together for us. We'll move on to the commissioners' report.
Sure. So I think it's great that you brought in a little culinary experience, cause today's March fourteenth, and that means it's
Hi!
it's Pi Day, so hopefully everybody, um.
I also need to say that it's my twins' birthday, and I was a math specialist when the twins were born on Pi Day, so it's especially.
Even better.
Yeah, even better.
Hopefully, everybody.
I'd get in trouble if I didn't say that.
Has some opportunity to indulge. But I, I also think, wh- when I reflect where we were in, in March about a, a year ago during this time, it, it's also, it's a busy time, and there's a lot that I, that I'd be remiss if we didn't just take a quick minute and kind of reminisce on what are some of those milestones. Last week, our, our agency got to work with the legislature and, and present kind of the state's budget that, um, we're really appreciative of Governor Sanders putting out, and, and it's, it's bold, it's innovative, and it's sticking to a commitment that we're gonna limit growth in government. And so we're really excited to be, a- as an agency, working with all the other state agencies, to come to the table and, and honor that commitment and that, that promise to Arkansans. And, uh, a, a big focus of our budget is supporting the Learns Act. And when we talk about the Learns Act, it, it's the largest overhaul of our, the Arkansas school system probably ever, at, at least definitely in modern history. And signing that into law was the first step, but implementation is kind of where we've been focused, and this board took some great action today by supporting some roles to, to, to work on that, that implementation. So I, I'm, I'm happy to, to see that we had about a hundred million dollars, uh, increase towards the education budget request that we're working with the legislature to support, just that. But when you think about just some of the milestones, that, I was sitting here just literally making bullets, trying to think of some of the stuff we do, and it, it's so hard to hit them all, but just some of these milestones about how we're reimagining early learning and, and like Ms. Keener's work group and is coming together to, to make sure that every family that wants access to high-quality early learning has an opportunity to do so, and that we are gonna do just that and provide, um, those high-quality experiences. And the, the implementation of local leads, where, where we're identifying people in communities that can be a direct support for providers. Um, it's, it's so innovative and it hasn't been done, and we just released a memo, I wanna say a few days ago, getting ready to put a call for the second round. And we're gonna make sure that, um, every part of the state is covered with the support that communities need, so that access is no longer a barrier, um, anywhere across the state. We, we talked a lot about literacy and, and you talked about the dyslexia screener. We heard about some of the rules today with, with the progress monitoring and, and, um, the fact that we were able to support about a hundred and twenty-four literacy coaches in August, boots on the ground in DNF schools, working side by side, um, as a coach with teachers to make sure that we're implementing the science of reading with fidelity and that we're supported with our instructional materials and making sure that, that early intervention is, is getting administered with fidelity so that we can make sure those students are on track to be at or above grade level. Looking at what we're doing with accountability system and, and assessment's gonna be ongoing, and, and Mr. Wood's work group is, is, is helping to provide and, and shape what that looks like, and how do we wanna reflect on student performance and, and what is it that goes into a school grade? There, there's gonna be some decision points coming to this board soon, cause that work group has really unpacked, um, within our current accountability system, and has some wonderful recommendations that we're, we're going through to finalize on making sure that our school grade system reflects learning and what we expect, um, students to be able to do. And, um, as, as we've moved forward, i- if you remember, one of the first actions this board took probably by March about a year ago was updating new English Language Arts and Math standards, and that was giving us the ability to work on moving back to a criterion-based assessment that was gonna reflect whether or not students were learning those standards. That was a huge undertaking, um, by this agency and, and school districts to make sure we can roll it out. But, um, good news is as we've moved forward with that new platform, tomorrow is the last day of the writing assessment window and statewide, we've already across three through ten, um, administer ninety-seven percent of the students have completed that assessment, and it's going very, very well, and we've got a lot of positive feedback. And then in fact, the new assessment window is gonna be coming up in, in coming weeks. It opens April fifteenth, and we're, we're, um, moving forward with Atlas Assessment. So all of this has been happening, um, throughout, throughout the, the past year, and the work groups are continuing to meet. In fact, we had some CTE folks meet last week, and we're updating our Learns portal. Other major milestones is investing in teachers, moving our starting salary from forty-eighth in the nation into the top five and making sure that every teacher is at a minimum of fifty thousand dollars a year and/or received at least a two thousand dollar raise. And then we talked today about how we're gonna implement that teacher merit system. That was a part of what we're doing so that we can recognize those special educators above and, and beyond even more. The, the work in CTE pathways, I, I'm very optimistic that'll be one of the big focus at our next workshop, where how do we, um, take the, the standard high school diploma and then recognize students that are hitting look, different levels of merit or, or distinguished, um, opportunities through acceleration? And, um, it was a big part of Learns to make sure that career technical education was recognized in a part of that big acceleration component. So I, I feel pretty good, um, that our next workshop, we wanna be able to, to present, what is that actually gonna look like? And how are we supporting school districts? Cause each, each school district is required to offer, um, at least three career and technical education pathways, but part of Learns requires one of those pathways to meet the definition of the high skill, high wage, high demand, that we call it the H three designation. So those work groups and workforce cabinet is, is, is identifying what those pathways are, and we're, we're gonna be able to bring those to the board here pretty soon and share some of that excitement. The high-impact tutoring grants are, are going well. Where, where we supported innovative tutoring programs with school districts, and then also empower parents to have access to an account of, of up to five hundred dollars to support high, uh, high, high-impact tutoring around literacy. And then empowering parents in, in some of the work even Dr. Smith and his team is, has done to, to roll out the Educational Freedom Accounts for this school year. And the number of students and, and families that are able to participate in, in a, in a wonderful initiative program that empowers parents is, um, is, is something that I, that I think we always need to take a, a moment to celebrate and, and recognize. And as we move forward with next year, we're, we're gonna keep continuing to make sure that we're implementing all of this wonderful legislation with fidelity, and we're gonna keep coming to the board and, and providing updates and, and implementation of rules so that we can further support districts. So I, I, I was just kind of taking this, this moment to, uh, to reflect on, we've accomplished a lot in, in a very short amount of time. And, and I, I think it's an exciting time for education in Arkansas, and you can feel that excitement when you walk in schools and, and you visit classrooms. People are excited about what's happening. Uh, another major event that, um, our agency's been working on with, with a lot of other agencies, and, and I hope everybody has April eighth marked on their calendar. What, what is April eighth?
The eclipse.
The great, the, the, the great eclipse, the great solar eclipse. So, uh, I, I'm happy to say that our, our team is, has been, uh, working on supporting schools, cause what an amazing educational experience for our students, for our young scholars to, doesn't matter what grade you're in, all the way from kindergarten through twelfth grade, there's, there's a way to, to make, um, this experience relevant and bring relevancy in the classroom and support science and, and math and technology, engineering. So we, we actually have on our, our website, if you just go to our main website, the desi dot ade dot Arkansas dot gov, we've created a full link, um, that has lots of information for parents, for students, for school districts, on how they can engage and, um, be a part of this wonderful experience. Lots of resources and, and different events that are happening. But our agency alone's done over twenty professional development sessions for teachers on how they can incorporate this learning experience into their classroom. We worked with our state library system. They've passed out over a, a million, um, Solar Eclipse classes, and we're still meeting that demand and need, uh, for everybody. And then we've also done some pretty neat things where, where like, um, UCA, their computer science department has developed these kind of light sensors where they're gonna do a, a full research exper- experiment on this process and wanted to include our, our schools. So we have sixty schools. So we have sixty schools that represent forty-five counties that are gonna be participating, using these sensors and a data collection experience throughout that entire day. And then another thing that I thought was really neat, and, and, uh, we've gotten to talk to some of the, the folks at the school for the blind, is they're doing a partnership with the light sound devices, and what that does is allow s- uh, students that are blind or have low vision to participate in the eclipse, because the device will change musical tones as the light sensors change outside. And so we've done a formal partnership with them and make sure that the students are gonna be able to participate in that experience. And then our partnership with Arkansas Ideas PBS, they're, they're doing a full documentary on the experience we're doing live streaming. So we've, we've been actively engaged in doing everything we can to, to celebrate and, and recognize a wonderful day for Arkansas. We just now need to hope for good weather.
For real.
You forgot one announcement. There, um, the governor announced recently the formation of the Maternal and Field Health Task Force.
Yes, go ahead.
And thank heavens that, um, they have included the secretary on the task force, because I think there's a real opportunity for us to do our part to improve that for Arkansas. You know, we, um, unfortunately, Arkansas has the highest teen birth rate in the nation, and there is certainly a way that we can support, um, those, those women to get, oh, excuse me, those, those teenagers to get their, continue to get their certificates, provide care for their children, make sure that they are aware of and enrolled in all of the already existing, um, services that Arkansas has. And I think there's definitely a place for us to, to do our part, so I'm excited about that.
Yes, and thank you for that, and it, we, we're part of a work group, and we actually had our initial meeting to start kind of rolling up what, what is each, what, what can each agency bring to the table, so we definitely want to provide updates. And I, I'm sure there may be some asks of this board, um, from, as we go through, because it's, it's an, an important priority. Um, a- as I'm kind of wrapping up and thinking about things that we're rolling out, we're, we're on track by April first to do, um, another, I call these kind of side projects on top of our other projects, but, but one of the things that we, we've been wanting to do and Governor Sanders signed an executive order to have e- every agency really look at cutting red tape and do we have a lot of bureaucracy? And one of the things that we're on track to roll out in the next month is, uh, i- is a consolidated application for federal programs. We're calling it ARAP. And I know that doesn't sound like a big deal, but currently, um, we have over fifteen federal grants that all have their own application, that have, all have their own requirements, that all have their own checklists. And our team has been working, uh, really hard with stakeholders and, and experts in this field that as we get ready to release that federal grant application next month, the school districts for some of their entitlement programs like Title III, Title I, Title IV, it'll be one application that'll meet the needs of all of the programs. So the district can write one strategic plan and then be able to break funding to support their initiative. So that has been a huge undertaking by a lot of people in our agency, but I, I think it's been very well-received by, by school districts. I know Matt's back there, and he's, he's led a lot of those conversations, so, um, I'll, unless there's any questions, I hope everybody has a wonderful spring break.
Questions, comments?
We do have people sign up for public comment, but if any board members wanted to ask anything, anything for.
Okay, great. Well, we have two individuals sign up for public comment. You know the drill. We've been here before. You have three minutes each. Mr. Julius Wright wrote his name down first, but y'all can pick who wants to go first, and that's it. Doesn't matter. We appreciate you being here today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Arkansas State Board, Members Secretary Olivia, Chairperson Dr. Moore, and all others present. I am Julius Wright, a concerned Pine Bluff School District stakeholder and a member of the Education Committee of the Pine Bluff Unit, N W A C P. Thank you for allowing me to make comments. Our concerns are many, but we will abide by your protocol. One area of our concern is that the denial of the Pine Bluff School District and elected board in a single election. Prior to annexation, Dalloway School District, you gave governance, and since that time, the governance has been ignored, which give rise to discrimination. The appointed limited board annexation governance did not allow the board to appoint or fire the superintendent March the fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. In a meeting with then interim superintendent, my wife and I were told that she won a contract after her interim contract of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Congratulations. She succeeded without the advertisement of, of her position, according to the Pine Bluff School District website. All vacancies are posted on the district website. The postings are on the bulletin board at the central administrative office and sent to all employees per email. Additionally, licensed staff openings are posted on the online bulletin board of the Arkansas Associated Education Administration. Immediately, or immediately afterwards, her hiring, she saw a need to post all administration positions instead of showing her ability to be a capacity. In closing, we support academic excellence and the hiring of qualified educators to lead our district and to uphold our mission to achieve equity and political rights and social inclusion by advancing policy and practice that expand human and civil rights, eliminate discrimination, and accelerate the well-being, education, economic security of Black people and all persons of color. Thank you for allowing me to have comments as a Pine Bluff School District stakeholder and a member of Education Committee of the Pine Bluff Unit of N W A C P. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Good morning. All State Board members, Secretary Jacob Aliva, Dr. Sarah Moore, Chairperson, and all others present. I am Charlene Wright, a concerned Pine Bluff School District stakeholder, a twenty-eight-year-retired educator. And after retirement, I did seven and a half years in the Plasque County Special School District. I returned to Pine Bluff as a math coach again in the Pine Bluff School District, and my final employment was in the Watson Chapel School District as a math specialist. In September twenty twenty-three, we communicated our support of the new Atlas Teaching and Learning Assessment. We supported the Atlas because it was communicated that equal access would be given to all teachers to review every item in the test bank to create formative assessment in preparation for their students to be successful on their summative assessments in hopes that equality in achievement and ESAL report card grades. We have collaborated with teachers around the state, and this is not the case. The Atlas Test Bank is not fully us, operational, which has denied the ability to create formative assessments. We are concerned if this is a rerun of the ACT Aspire Assessments. They gave faulty data, and that equal access to release test items of the ACT Aspire Assessment never occurred. The Arkansas Department of Education knew within two years there was no test bank after the initial administration of the summative assessments. They knew that the test scores were flat, and they never replaced it. In a similar manner, as the Park Assessment, they had released test items. ADE provided an alignment study of the ACT Aspire Assessment to selective teachers from, to selective co-ops. After the alignment study, the ACT Aspire test forms that were used were never disseminated to the other school district. We, teachers and instructional facilitators, went seven years using exemplars, never seeing released test items or saw forms of the ACT Aspire Assessment. We were the only state using, administrating the ACT Aspire Assessment, therefore, there was no data to compare to. But yet, the Learns legislation was passed using the ACT Aspire data labeling the districts and students as failed status quo's and dominoes to fall without seeing released test items and test bank in hopes that all students will have equal access to perform on the Atlas Test of Summative Assessments. We are asking that you consider a waiver for this school year to not consider the Atlas Test summative scores as ESAL report card grades, because the bank has not been fully equally op- operational to provide the needed formative assessments and training to teaches, teachers. In closing, we support the, at the Arkansas Teaching and Learning Assessment System in hopes that it will uphold our mission to achieve equality, political rights, social inclusion by advancing policies and practices that expand human and social rights, elimi- eliminate discrimination in assessments, accelerate the well-being, education, and economic security of Black people and all persons of color. And I'm not talking hearsay. I was a math coach and a math instructional specialist. We never saw released test items of the ACT Aspire Assessment, and we were never privileged to release test bank, to a test bank. Thank you for allowing me to have comments as a Pine Bluff School District stakeholder and a member of the Education Committee of the Pine Bluff Unit of the N W A C P.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. We appreciate you coming in today and sharing your comments, and I know hopefully you'll be able to get some of your questions answered. Thank you. With that, is there any other public comments? Okay, with that, we will bring the March State Board meeting to close. Appreciate you all being here today and the work you do. Thank you.